It's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody who came, including those online. I'll call this planning commission meeting to order. It's seven o'clock, January tenth. That moves us to consent, uh, agenda item number two, which is consent and approval of the planning commission minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do you all get a chance to review those?
Yes.
Does anyone have any concerns or comments, or can we entertain the motion?
I'll make a motion. Do we accept the minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three?
All right, and we have a second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. We've had it resolved, but motion passes.
It's approved.
It moves us to agenda item number three, which is discussion action recommend to recommend approval of Harrisville ordinance five forty-nine, an amendment to the mixed use infill general plan map to include Weber County parcels eleven dash zero two seven dash zero one zero four, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero one eight, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero zero two three, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero zero two two, and eleven dash zero two seven dash zero 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 four, and eleven dash zero two seven dash zero zero two four, located at approximately two sixty-five east Larson Lane. All right, this is what we had a public hearing on last month. And so the staff has an update, so Jenny, can you update us on that?
So the, really, the only update we have is to make sure that you received the additional help comments that came through. I'm assuming everybody did. That would, that would comprise our staff update. We're here to entertain any questions that you have. For staff, we've got the applicant, myself, and our public works director that can answer any questions or concerns that you might have for us.
I know it might be worth it to have the developer come up.
Well, the general plan, we're going to need the same plan for it. Also, I don't know that we should go forward with it because bringing it too far to the interior further away from our commercial corridors. So when we put in the mixed use, the reason we did it on the Washington and Wall of eighty-nine was because those were commercial corridors, not just major transit corridors. I don't feel like Larson Lane or seven hundred north really fit those criteria. We've got the overway fairly far in already as far as what mixed use could entail off of those routes. So I don't see the need to recommend approval. I think we should give them a negative recommendation to the city council.
Brad, do you, how, how well we're starting to learn this? Do you have any questions?
You know, um...
Not to put you on the spot.
It just, it just seems like every meeting that I make it to, we have a Larson Lane discussion. And, but no, I, I look through it a little bit. I don't... I like what I see. I, I just think that, I, I don't think that... I don't know. Is it the right development for there, you know, to me? I, I, I don't know.
Also, we had a good most development for it.
Yeah.
See, I think it would be, it would be good to have him come up and just kind of, would, would be helpful for the, if the developer came up for a minute and shared with us the plan again and...
Well, there's two of that story, and you want him to come up as well?
You know, I, I've thought many days about this proposal, and my thoughts keep going back to the point that we have lots and we have houses that are not sold in our city right now. I've got two in my neighborhood that have been for sale. And I just think anything that's over five hundred thousand dollars right now is not moving quickly. And so unless these homes are three, four hundred thousand dollars, I just have looked at the market real estate-wise. I've talked to real estate people. And I just don't know that it's the right time to proceed with making more lots, more homes. Um, I think we have the subdivision just west of, you know, this area that there's empty homes, right, that aren't selling. We have on the other side of eighty-nine that's empty lots. I just don't know with the golf course, the way that it's sitting right now, my, my initial thoughts were to not approve it as well. So I just don't know that the timing is right. I think, and I've thought a lot about it, and I said this last planning commission, I think as far as the best case scenario, I think having individual homes, I think that's the best anybody can hope for when they're having development next to their homes. Um, I think that's great. I love that idea. I just don't know that making more homes over five hundred thousand dollars is the answer and will be something that moves quickly in that location.
Chad, do you still want input?
I, I do. I do. Would you mind coming up to the, for just a minute?
We'll let you come up.
Could you?
I would be happy to. Glaive McCombs.
Let's go over with Karen.
Okay. Um, I think that, uh, you know, to address Jordan's comment, entry-level homes in Utah right now, median price of a home is, is, is over five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so that's the median price of an average home in Utah. Uh, those are actually selling in that price range. If you get up into the six and sevens and eight hundred thousand, that, those are the homes that are not selling, which is why we wanted to get a little higher density in this area and smaller lots and smaller homes is because those are products that people are looking for. Uh, the entry-level home right now in Utah is ending up being townhomes. And I don't know about you guys, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have wanted my first home to be a townhome. Not that townhomes are bad, but I think that, I think that most people, their dreams are not to live in a townhome, but to live in a single-family home. Uh, if we can produce single-family homes that are smaller footprint on a smaller lot, uh, those are selling and they're very popular right now. Uh, these homes, as we talked last month, these homes will not have a basement, uh, in that area. They will be probably two-level homes just because with the smaller lots, we need that for the square footage. But that also helps reduce the overall build costs to do a, to do a second story on the home. It's cheaper to go up than to go down. And, um, and it's the best, the best stab that we can take at affordability. And I think that, you know, the governor is, is certainly pushing for more entry-level affordable homes. These will be homes that will fit the governor's criteria for first-time home buyers and new construction. And those would be available for, uh, the state of Utah grants that they have made available. Uh, there are also many cities who are putting forward grants and counties who are putting forward grants for exactly this style home because it is in demand and people want to purchase those homes. So I, I hear over and over again, cities talking about, let's make affordable housing. Let's make available affordable housing. Uh, Jenny mentioned last month in her, uh, preliminary comments about this that that is exactly what you're trying to do as a city. And if, if you're not going to make affordable homes like this available to the residents, then what will be the affordable option? Uh, the only other affordable option that I see is you could cover your whole town with, with townhomes or condos. I don't think that's the ideal dream for America. The other thing that you could maybe make available is tiny homes. And I don't think that a lot of people are going to move into a tiny home. If, there is a certain, a certain percentage of people who will look for that kind of home, but I think that, that is a very specialized niche. Yeah, it's a very specialized niche, and most people aren't doing it. And so I don't know how you would get more affordable homes than this. And we can try to hit a price point that would be, I mean, our, our effort is to have a price point that's affordable. Um, but we also don't want to build, uh, substandard homes either. So we want these to be a nice home that would complement the community, but it's our best, it's our best effort to build an affordable home in your community.
So remind us how big of a home you're contemplating and then size of lot?
Okay.
Cause I, I want Brad to get that.
Yeah. The lots would be probably somewhere around six thousand square feet. And the homes themselves would be probably around eighteen, nineteen hundred square feet. And most of them would be, uh, most of the plans that we're looking at right now that would fit on that size of a footprint, uh, would be a three-bedroom home. Uh, so it would be like a three-bedroom, two-bath home.
See, and is there any other questions going here?
No, I don't, um, like I said, I, I, I like the idea of staying with individual homes. I really do. I think that that's kind of a, a trend I would like to see our city go with because we, we have plenty of the other. And so I like that idea. Um, I like it a lot. I'm just not as, um...
Well, let me just throw this out on the table, too, because one of the things that we don't have in Harrisville are places for adults who don't need a big house to downsize into. And, and houses like this could also fill that bill because they may not want to go into townhomes or condos.
We have mixed-use overways where that could be built already. We don't need to expand it.
Yeah, I think that's one thing we need to realize, too, is we're not only improving the development, we're improving the change in the land.
We're not, we're not improving the development on this one. We're just extending the overlay on the general plan.
And, and that, that's been my concern, right? I've looked across what we have for sale in Harrisville, and there are several, several homes under six thousand, uh, six, under six hundred thousand dollars, right? That are sitting. Um, and so that tells me these are twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred square foot homes not selling. Well, if I'm a consumer and I'm out looking at a nineteen hundred square foot, three-bedroom home that I can buy for five hundred and thirty, or a four-bedroom home, thirty-five hundred square foot, I can buy for five seventy-nine, probably going to go to the five seventy-nine because it's not going to make that much of a dent in my payment over thirty years. So that's my concern with it. Are, are they cheap enough that it's really going to fit that niche? Are they going to sell? Are they going to hit the consumers the way that we hope they would? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Even if it is, do we really need the increased density?
Correct. Like Nate says, we've, we've got other areas we can do that already.
Thank you for your time.
I just, one of the things that, that I thought of is we have, we have seen this before in Harrisville. You know, um, the individual homes. You look at the, the President Streets is what I've always called it. You know, the, the older, older homes, small footprint, small lots and stuff like that. They're never empty. You know, they're, they're there. Is there a need for that in our community?
There is.
There is.
There is, definitely.
The question is where do we put it?
Right.
On this item, is do we extend that infill map to fill in that section south of Larson Lane?
Epsin, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
I'm not.
Going in that part.
I think it's too far in.
Cause other than that, if we don't do that, then we just have more single-family homes that are larger.
Well, we have places for mixed use that haven't gone. So do we really need more mixed-use available land?
Well, that's, that's true, too. You know, if I were to downsize, if I were to be in a position to downsize, I wouldn't want to live next to busy street.
But, but here's also our question, Chad, is if we approve everything to the mixed use, then all we have left will be mixed used, right? So that's the other thing we have to ask ourselves. Do we want all the land we have left in Harrisville to be mixed used? I would say no.
I would say no.
Oh, I, definitely, because that's inappropriate, but, but we're just talking about this particular...
We're knocking on that door right now.
We are. The more we expand this, the more frequently it'll come out.
I'd like to hear what Jenny has to say from the city's perspective.
So obviously, this is a legislative decision, so this is open for your interpretation and final recommendation of positive or, or negative to the city council. From staff's perspective, um, some of the concerning things that are coming down, um, mandated-wise, I know there's been some discussion on whether we should have a fearful mindset on those mandates or not. Um, but preliminary discussions even prior to the legislative session this season, which begins next Tuesday, indicate that there's going to be, you know, additional pressure put on cities. One of the comments made at the city council level when we adopted this subdivision ordinance uh, was allowing flag lots. They had a little bit of, um, heartburn over allowing flag lots through the city. And the city attorney, Brody Flint, recommended that the city look at all available housing options as much as possible because some of these mandates that are coming down are, uh, going to be more and more difficult for us to meet. So just, I don't want to come from a position that the city, that staff is pressuring these decisions. It's ultimately your option to make these decisions, and this is a great discussion tonight to show your concern with it. Uh, but some of the preliminary discussions for this, to meet the governor's request for starter homes are mandating how many lots per acre are going to be allowed to... We're, we're going to be looking at some of the land use code in the next few years to be able to meet those needs, regardless of whether we call it mixed use or we rezone for smaller lots throughout the city. This is...
And, and I think that's a great, that's a great point, right? Like, do we just rezone to smaller lots? Like, right, every time in our city's history that we've refused a smaller lot, we get annexed by North Ogden, and then we just lose property tax. We lose people. So that's something I think that in the future could be addressed better, too. Like, did we do mixed use or would we just rezone the lot size? Which might be a better way to go about it, too.
And, and that, that's valid. The, the advantage to mixed use is it's a negotiation. The disadvantage to allowing that standard adopted and it is citywide and allowable anywhere. So those, those are just perspectives from staff's side that says you, we can do, we can go down that route now. Our attorney recommended we start looking at these things so we get out ahead of it instead of waiting until we're scrambling to come up with it. But those are all things that we can take back as staff for feedback from this body and say, we'll start entertaining other options, other ways that we can...
I don't think there's much left for North Ogden, but annexes.
Not anymore.
There's annexation policy plans in place now that, that don't necessarily allow for that to happen. That, that we, we each adopt our own annexation policy plan that outlines what portions will come into our cities.
Yeah. But I just don't think mixed use needs to go that far into the interior until it's filled what we have already overweighed. Because if we're not incentivizing them to develop mixed use where we can do mixed use already, then is there really a need to expand it? And we've had areas in mixed use where we've had issues getting that mixed use in. So, I mean, if, if it comes up years down the road or if the legislature actually acts on it, we can see about it then, but...
Oh, it will be sooner than years.
Well, it depends.
It'll be sooner than years, the population is growing.
Oh, the population's growing, but the way it's growing is different.
I mean, see, right now, I've got two kids who are going to get married, and both of them are going to have to live in apartments for who knows how long. And for those that are retired and want to downsize, they're going to have to leave the city because there's no other places. So what do we do? I mean, these are good-sized homes, smaller lots.
There are empty lots and developments we've already approved.
Right, but these would be smaller. They'd be more likely to be purchased and moved here.
Get that built.
Yep. Yep. So that's, that's been a frustration, for sure. Long frustration.
Right, but if the golf course develops, there will be all of your smaller lot homes.
There will be a lot, right.
There's a section there just for the senior housing area.
Yes.
And so, but if we can't get that to go in the market as it is today, do we really need more space available for it?
Right, so what's the true disadvantage to coming in? Because...
So mixed use is supposed to be a transition between a commercial corridor and a more residential area. The area proposed to, the, the over, isn't a transition area. It's too far in already. And the area that's already got the overlay would serve as a transition area.
So how do you foresee the development in that area?
I don't know.
I know, see, the challenge is, you see, what I see is, is bigger lots and more expensive homes rather than smaller lots and less expensive homes going in there. And this is an opportunity to have smaller homes and smaller lots in like a small subdivision.
But I don't think we need that everywhere in the city either.
And it's also, too, I mean, it's, I mean, we're calling it mixed use, but it's also mixed use infill. Uh, and we could put infill in lots of places.
We could put infill in lots of places, but it's not going to transition from the higher density to a lower density. It'll transition from lower on all sides to higher until the mixed use overlay we already have develops as the higher density. And then potentially, we would want more higher density to transition from that. But we don't have that higher density to transition from at the moment. Until we do, I don't think this property really needs, you know, like...
Interesting question to me is, so that other, the part along Washington, right there. So what will then serve as the barrier or the transition?
So that section of that will transition. And then once that's in, then maybe we'll think of more transition.
That's at six hundred feet from the street, according to what he was saying.
Sounds like, yep.
Which is pretty far into that area already. Uh, and then how far is that transition going to be? And are people going to be happy with what that transition looks like?
We'll see when that comes, but until those start...
Yeah, because it could be, it could be more apartments.
Yeah, and I, and that's the thing. I don't think we can make tonight's discussion about what comes in the future.
No, but this is all part of the discussion.
It is, yeah.
We have to just be able to throw everything out on the plate and see.
Yeah.
Because I wonder if we discuss this...
We can tell that gets filled in to then say, how do we transition from that? And we could extend that overlay if we needed to in order to accommodate further transition at that point. But until we're getting onto those commercial corridors, I don't see the need to give them more space.
Who knows how long that will be with us?
And I don't know.
People that live there currently. I, I just, I just see the need for smaller homes, for transition homes. And, and we don't have a lot of that in Harrisville. And I hate to see people who like living here have to move out and go to another city because they can't find anything here to move into. And for that reason, I would, I would like to, to pass it so that we can have some of these...
I have one question and a little bit of a concern. If we, if we pass tonight and move this forward to council and stuff like that, um, does that lock this all in and, and, and make it so that a developer can come in and start right away? We have got so much approved stuff going on and nothing happening. You know, I mean, that, that might be a, a big selling point for some people to make a decision is, okay, if this happens, are we going to make it happen now and then twenty-five years down the road, that lots are still sitting there? You know, or homes being built and nothing's going because it didn't work out the way it was in plan? You know, we got an empty golf course. I just started golfing this year.
And the golf course is mixed use overlay.
But is it happening?
We went through the whole process and it's not.
That's, that's, that's where I get concerned.
Until some of those start going, we really have no...
Would it be helpful if we reviewed our current mixed use so that you know the status of the current projects? Is that helpful at all, or?
I don't think we need to.
I don't, I, no, I don't think so.
So, and how would something like this benefit the city?
What are the benefits to the city of allowing this amendment?
Financially, otherwise?
The reason it's before this body, the reason we just decided to go this route and staff recommended this is because the mixed use is a negotiated product.
Right.
Uh, the current zoning on the property is not a viable development option. The cost for infrastructure and the amount of lots that would be at the RE fifteen level, it, it, it would outspend the product. There's, there isn't a viable option to do that. The, that's why they, there's quickly going to be changes in infrastructure allowable options for development because of the cost of putting in infrastructure. That's why we don't see any movement. I'll try not to get into the golf course, but that's why we don't see movement. Because the, the cost of the infrastructure to put in the public roads, sewer, sidewalk, all of that is, is expensive with the inflation that's gone up for residential. It's hit the developers as well. So the benefit to the city is, uh, is the smaller lots and the negotiation process that takes place at the mixed use level. Many of you have sat on those committees and, and know how that process works.
Yep. I just don't know too many younger kids that can still go get with not a lot of money down, a five hundred something thousand dollar payment. You know, that's two thousand dollars, no matter how you shake a stick at it, if not more. And so I just, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's going to fill up with those buyers, is my concern. There's a good time and a place for townhomes. I had one, I made a lot of money off of it when I sold it. You know, they're, they're, they're a good transition for young families. They really are. I mean, I don't want the city full of them, and I wouldn't recommend that. But, you know, there's, there's options that are there for young families, so...
I just don't think we need more space for it. We already have available lots for mixed use that could be developed that way as well. We don't need to make this particular section available now if we're going to have that mixed use elsewhere because we are meeting the requirements of having it available in those other places for them to develop if they wanted to.
Yep.
So we would just need to redo map, rezone it?
Well, what we're doing right now is just adding the overlay, allowing for...
In the future.
To rezone.
To rezone that area, right, for smaller homes.
At some point, if we wanted to go that route, yeah.
So we would have to consider something smaller than our, our one-ten, which is our lowest ten thousand square foot lot.
And if the legislature takes any actions and that's what they would bring down is allowing that, so we could consider that when, if and when they act on that. They haven't yet, so I just don't know that it's the right time to push this one forward where we have so much else that it could be done there.
See, my concern, too, is that regardless of how we rezone the area, that people just still complain about the transition from the mixed use to this area. And this, this would make it actually two transitions. Now, the transition, then we would have this project right here, and then we'd have the larger homes. I see this as kind of a win, honestly, in several ways. Yeah, you can develop land, and if they're willing to put the money forward and build, build on the land, it's only slightly higher density, really, than our smaller lots.
Lots significantly higher than what's around it.
Yeah, that's, that's higher than what's around it. That's absolutely true. That's absolutely true.
We have more discussion, or should we put this to a vote one way or the other? So I know Chad and I are on opposite sides of this, and we have to put one motion in there. Do you want to make a motion? Should I make a motion? Chad, you want to make a motion?
How, how many, so do we have, how many nayers do we have against? You're, you're against? Bill, are you, are you making four or against? You're against? Okay, there's three, three, and probably four, so it would just be a one.
I'm, yeah, I, like I said, I, it's a tough one for me because I'm kind of on both sides. I, I, you know, I think, I think that most of us could probably say we see the good in both ways. Um, do I feel like it's? Um, yeah, I, I'm probably a...
Okay, I'll, I'll just be one for it. Okay. Go ahead and entertain the motion, and I'll just...
I'll entertain a motion that we give a negative recommendation on the ordinance five forty-nine. I'll make that motion, actually.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I'll second. Oh, do we need to second?
Jordan seconded, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. There is four to one. Thank you for the discussion. It's nice to have discussions on these things.
It is, it's very nice to have.
All right, that moves us to agenda item number four, which is discussion action recommend to grant preliminary class approval of Dixon Creek Park subdivision phase one, located approximately thirteen hundred north Washington Boulevard. Jenny, can I take us through the staff memo on this one?
Yes. Check me, I believe I have the wrong memo printed, so I'm going to pull it up here in the packet. The wrong memo printed, so I'm going to pull it up here in the packet. Let me share my screen. We do have the developer on Zoom with us this evening. So let me go ahead and share my screen so that. So as we jump forward into a mixed use project that's under development currently, we received an application from D.R. Horton for preliminary subdivision approval for Dixon Creek Park mixed use subdivision, which is located at approximately 1300 North Washington Boulevard. The submitted application is consistent with the master development agreement and we outlined those comparisons here in your staff memo. And we'd just like to draw your attention to the newly adopted ordinance 548, which was approved after a recommendation through planning commission. It was approved and adopted by the city council in November, which updated the exhibits in the MDA. So I'll just skim over unless the commission has any questions regarding the comparison pictures. We do have a memo from the city engineer, he's also included comments. This, I should mention, this application came through under the new subdivision ordinance. So the, it will receive its approval through the administrative land use authority. And so this is the approving piece that planning commission is now involved in with the preliminary plat approval. There's also outlined here any engineer's comments. And the plat is available for your, excuse me, that's the wrong one. The plat is available also here with the engineer's comments on the plat for your discussion.
Question, with the two car garages on about half of the units and the six and seven unit ones, are they still going to fit in the space if those get widened to be actual two cars where they're shown as one car? Now that was one of the engineer's concerns.
So there was actually a typo on the memo from the development application that's misstated that there are two car garages for all units. There are a certain number of units that are a single car garage with a single driveway.
Okay, 30 of them?
Yes. And one of the items that was discussed at the city council level with the single family, or excuse me, the single car garage and the single driveways was the addition of the parking spaces to all units. The previous preliminary approval that we gave granted had a number of units that had no driveways. They were alley loaded. So this does increase the parking calculation for the totality of the project.
How many parking spaces are there per unit then?
So the complete, yes, I view. So the complete parking for the entire subdivision, or this subdivision is 731 stalls, provided parking, that includes all parking that's outlined on the plat.
How many units total?
How many total units? And, you know, it's 196 between both phases. And this is only phase one.
Right.
So in this phase, I don't have that number off the top of my head. We originally were moving forward with both phases and we reduced it back to just phase one.
So there's a total of 36 units between phase one and two are shown. But that could be, I'm just looking, but that doesn't sound right.
That's for the parking.
That's just the one.
For the single family garage, yeah, the single family garages.
There's quite a few others.
I mean, I've got Chriselle on the spot. Chriselle, do you know how many total units are in phase one?
And there's 102 total units in phase one and 94 in phase two. And those 33 units that you're speaking of are mixed between the two phases. Overall, there would be 3.72 parking stalls provided per unit.
See, other than that, there was the road and. The addresses, so there aren't really that many other concerns from the staff for that.
That's pretty impressive to me.
Well, and that's with the reduced garages too. So that's still. And there's, because those interior townhomes that have the one car garage are also smaller footprints. So they're going to be more affordable, so more certain places for that as well. Any concerns, other concerns? There are a lot of things marked on here, but most of them are fairly straightforward. I guess I have one other question. So there's a question about the property that goes around phase two. And I know the road has to be included in phase one because otherwise no one's going to be able to get anywhere. But that part that goes around the Bank of Townhomes that I'm building, what's the status of that? Why was that included in this?
So are you talking about the comments at the north end?
Yes, that section.
So this, that was the comment by the engineer to maybe identify the remaining portion of the project, which is the commercial space.
And that's, that's where the stream goes, right?
Yes, it, the stream is the separation between the commercial. The commercial property will remain private, but the western portion that will be dedicated to the city as a part. And that's what the engineers called out is, should that be identified?
Yes, I was thinking the reason that part was included was because the stream has to get rerouted for the road. So we should leave that in phase one, just because it includes the road. It's not really getting any buildings put on it and it is just being part of this phase because the stream gets rerouted. Correct?
So the stream is, is being rerouted for the building of the lots in phase two.
All right, let me say, doesn't it have to be rerouted to go under the road as well? No?
No, it's.
Jesse, do you want to come up and speak about this?
So it's not, under the roadway, it's not being rerouted, it is being piped in. So we did, they did have to go secure a special permit to the state for a stream alteration permit. But the, the actual division, and then they're working through the FEMA process to change the floodplain so they can make sure that none of the lots in phase two fall under that floodplain. But, yeah, so that's just kind of, the stream really is only getting altered in this first half. And then the pipe.
I have to do that, okay. Just wanted to make sure, keeping track of where that is in this project, since it also wasn't shown on here. Since that won't make a difference, but that'll make a difference for phase two. It's not really going to affect what we're doing here in phase one.
Do we have any timelines when we start?
Once they get approved.
They're hopeful, they're hopeful that the spring gets up. We're trying to along the process.
One other thing, and, and they did preliminary stock the utilities to get out of Washington Boulevard before the overlay is done last year. So they already do have utilities stowed into the property.
Well, Chair, if you're open, I'm ready to. Yeah, I motion that we approve the grant preliminary approval for this plat amendment to Dixon Creek Park subdivision phase one located approximately 1300 North Washington, subject to the staff memo dated January 3rd of 2024, the engineer's memo dated January 4th of 2024, and all other city requirements.
I have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, that brings us to agenda item number five, which is public comments. This is time for anyone here to come up and take three minutes of our time to tell us anything you want to tell us. Can you state your name and what you want to say?
We don't know who Aaron is.
What's that?
We don't know who Aaron is.
Yeah, my name's Aaron Field, I live at 230 East 700 North. Just wanted to thank you guys for listening to the public comment, we appreciate that. And just as, just as, I, I'll skip most of the comments I was going to make, but just a thought that I've had is that it feels like the unaffordable housing is more of an economy problem than a, a small city problem. You know, I think the economy is going to fix itself and I think that's, that's what's making houses unaffordable is the economy. And I think that's out of our, out of our control. Anybody in this room can't control the economy. So I, I think, I think you guys made the right decision. I think that the, I think there's not a house small enough that you could build right now that would make it affordable to, for a new family to, to move into, so. The economy is riding, as these houses are sitting, they're going to, the prices are going to go down and down and lots are going to go down and down and I think it's gonna, the problem's going to get fixed. So thank you for hearing our, our comments, we appreciate you guys, any thoughts?
Thanks for coming and showing interest. Any other issues you'd like the city to be aware of, other than this issue?
Or any other comments? There are no other comments. There's more comments?
I don't know if I touched that. Hi.
You can put it down.
Sorry, oh, no, I can't. My name is Heidi Schlegel, I live at 316 East 700 North. And I also want to say thank you to the commission for voting no on that. But something was brought up that I just would like to make sure to bring to public record again. I've brought it before, but 700 North has a problem. We are, if you look at the map, there's a blind curve right there and we have a speeding issue. There's no sidewalks, there's no safe place for kids to be. My house actually has been run into and I had to fix that. And so just especially as we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about the beauty of Harrisville, keep in mind that even though some of the structures are there when you are changing zoning laws, we have some issues when we're trying to make these rural streets into bigger areas. But the speeding is an issue on our street and I just thought I would put that into public comment again. It's been since 2019, since I brought it up, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There's no other public comment? We'll go ahead and close our public comment period and move on to agenda item number six, commission and staff follow up. Jenny, do you have a staff follow up for us?
I do actually. A reminder that we're having our retreat on January 23rd from 6 until 8 at the cabin. We will have a light dinner and then we will have some discussion. We'll have our annual training held that night for our Open Meetings Act and our non-discrimination and some additional new legislator training for our new council member as well. As just reminders for everyone on those procedures. And then we'll be having some pretty in-depth conversations about the city complex, the 750 West, and update on that. And also a bunch of discussion for the city council members, but you're welcome to be.
That was interesting last time.
Sit through if people like to. Yeah, we have started.
Was that here or?
It's at the cabin, it'll be held at the cabin. 20, the 23rd from 6 until 8 p.m.
Thank you.
Most in-depth day we're going on. Everyone goes line by line through everything.
I suppose I should piggyback off that to remind you all of the annual training requirements to make sure that you.
It's four hours.
That the retreat will count towards that training for this 2024 calendar year. But you'll need some additional training hours to look for those. There's a lot of them online now that you can take.
And that just restarted the work of the calendar year for, for the training. Any follow up from the commission?
I don't have any.
Any other follow up? All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We need a motion first.
Brad, you want to?
I'll make a motion or make you adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion, we're going to second it.
Okay, you second.
I made a motion.
You made a motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned.